Board of Ed meeting. It's great to have a meeting in person after fifteen, sixteen months and I welcome you on behalf of my colleagues. I'm sitting up with the day is here. We will start with a roll call please, Mrs. Hunt.
Dr. Cortelino? Here. Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Vanna?
Here.
Dr. Modra? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Mr. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance, please everyone.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, a true republic with its hands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In Jersey, in terms of voting law, enacted in short writing process, has been noted as two expensive public bodies and which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpelot School and Board of Education provided public notice of this meeting, which included time-dated location that was posted at the Montpelot Township Municipal Building, all Montpelot public schools, the Montpelot Public Library, the Montpelot School and Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and the American Academy of Pediatrics official newspaper on June twenty-third, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. Slun. There's no student representatives with us this evening, they'll be joining us in September once school gets started. We do have two presentations by the superintendent, but before that, if she has any remarks, Dr. Rotar?
Thank you. Both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics have recently released guidance for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year with regard to a number of aspects of school operations, including requiring masks. The district's safety return plan indicates that we will follow the guidance of the Department of Education and any executive orders that would happen to be in place with regard to many requirements for masks. To date, we have not received any updated guidance from any of those agencies. In his remarks on Monday, Governor Murphy indicated that he is not addressing the mask issue at this time, as any changes in position on this issue can be made at any time, probably closer to the start of the new school year.
Yeah, we can't hear anything.
Can you put the mic on?
I will start. Both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics have recently released guidance for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year with regard to a number of aspects of school operations, including requiring masks. The district's safety return plan indicates that we will follow guidance of the Department of Health, Department of Communication, and any executive orders in place at the time with regard to any requirements for masks. To date, we have not received any updated guidance from any of those agencies. In his remarks on Monday, Governor Murphy indicated that he is not addressing the mask issue at this time, as any changes in position on this issue can be made at any time, probably closer to the start of the new school year, which for us is more than seven months away. I am not making any recommendations to the board on masks for this meeting. There is no urgent need to make any decision tonight. The board, having received input from parents at previous board meetings, knows the position of many parents who have spoken on this topic over a series of board meetings. The board also has results from the survey that was conducted in June with regard to optional face masks. So we have that information when it comes, when there comes a time when I will make a recommendation to the board, and it will not be tonight, we will certainly take all that information into consideration. So, the items on the agenda that I am not going to specifically leave anyone through because they are attachments to the agenda and can be reviewed individually are the summary of progress on last year's goals, did very well on gaining those goals. And the second item is the Department of Education's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fifth grade report. And I did provide an attachment to the summary report, which has also been posted as required on the district's website. We do very well in terms of the grading on that indicator, there's several indicators with regard to training that we provide on, for us, foundation of learning, and the various policies and procedures that we have in place. The scores for these individual district schools and the district itself reflect those very high marks. So, the other, the actual presentation this evening, I'm going to be serving the role of Charlene Peterson, who is our New Jersey School Boards representative, who typically facilitates the development of the board goal. She was unable to join us to see him. It is typically at each July meeting that the board does engage in developing district goals for the coming school year so that the administrative team can prepare an action plan to accomplish those goals over the course of the year. So, we are going to start, as Charlie said, with a discussion of some of the positive aspects of the district, things that we are most proud of. I'm going to be recording, so I will allow Mr. Brown to manage the board's thing.
Thank you, Dr. Rotar, because our rep could not make it. Lucky to have her at Houston, she's done this before, and no doubt she'll be able to lead the area.
All right, so the first area is district strength and accomplishments. Those items that we feel proud of, that we feel the district has been particularly strong in. I open the floor to the board. Staff.
Who was that one?
Staff.
Staff.
Communication.
Facilities.
Efficiency of office and supply.
What was that one?
Efficiency of business operating.
Always the shift between the staff and the administrators.
Efficiency of office and supply.
What was that one?
Efficiency of business operating. Okay, part two, as you know, is.
Maybe, maybe, just three dogs. We didn't hear any problems.
Staff, communication, facilities, inclusion, athletic achievements, academic achievements, efficient business operations, staff administration relationships, physical building upgrades, and professional development. So, the next step is to talk about initiatives that are in progress and challenges that require continued focus. Initiatives that are in progress and challenges that require continued focus.
I think coming back from a year we had is going to present a challenge, and I think ensuring the academic performance of our students coming back from the year is going to be a tribute to our already.
I would guide you in this whole, uh, awareness.
I think that I agree that communication is, can be considered a strength in many areas, but I also think in today's world, communication is a great challenge that we need to acknowledge and continue to strive to be better.
Continuing to attract a top talent for teachers. Half the don't go not play. Yeah. I don't know if it's on one of these two or third one, but we have some construction going on town, apartments, townhouses, and I know it's been many years since we've had a demographic study done. I think that we should be looking at working on asking if that takes a little bit of years to have a draft update.
Sorry to state this, but I think we should add something to the first one because we talked about academics and athletics, and I think we need to recognize the performance of our arts in handball, though.
This now goes forward, which is, as you said, the strength of the fact we offer so many things that are non-academic, so many non-academic students. And as an initiative, to keep just continuing to try to look at the others, ways we can offer our students things outside of the classroom that they can go, go well, rather than.
Is that like called, or am I?
So, the next step, which is sometimes a little bit of a challenge, is to look at these items and see if there are three or four goals that we think we can derive from, you know, these issues that we want to focus on. And we don't really need to flesh out an entire goal statement, the administrative team can accomplish that, but if we can zero in on those three or four goal areas that we feel we want to have as our focus over the coming academic year. That's where I'm going. If I can jump in on one thing, I do think that updating the demographic study is something that we probably should have as a goal. With the current study, we're beyond the parameters of the current study. We had talked about doing a new study and then the pandemic hit, so I think that is probably, I'll add that to, you know, a list of considering topics.
Perhaps to implement a plan of accelerated instruction, sort of working off of what Michelle had mentioned.
I think facilities, you know, we do that every year, facilities upgrades, I think that. I know you're going to wind up for more than three hours, I'm going to wind up. Those of you that drove up tonight to see what we're doing outside on the high school, we were done in the parking lot, attention, so this is kind of the change that we have to also.
I think part of number two needs to be the, you know, and how it should be done can be discussed, it needs to be the mentoring of the progress and, you know, of the students, I think you need to make sure focus on that, and the continuation of academics again.
I want to dominate the conversation, but I do think that the mental health component is something that I think we are going to need to put some, we've already made some of those plans, but I think, you know, as we're transitioning, hopefully, on out of the pandemic, I think that's probably something that should.
Great.
So, I will take those goal topics and work with the administrative team to hopefully formulate some goals that we can bring down to board at the August meeting, and hopefully approve them so that we can put an action plan in place for.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes me.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Business administrators, do we have any report, Mrs. Sun?
No report.
No report. All right, now we're going into committee reports. Finance with facilities. Karen Corley is the chair, Karen.
Right before tonight's meeting, we discussed the financial position of closing down this school year as well as looking forward to the next three years. We went over some of the construction and technology projects, which included some career improvement to the Zara High School, and just new procedures for the business office.
Thank you, Karen. Curriculum day was in here, but I don't know if you guys have met, so glad you made it. How about, please, Christian?
Thanks, Charlie. The policy is passing out immediately on July eighth. The committee reviewed the number of policies and regulation updates and discussed the abolishment of some updates on your expired policies and regulations. A few policies and regulations have been out that was reviewed and approved by the committee, including staff evaluations, non-renewal of non-tenured staff, rich AR virus program, and school district travel. Additionally, one policy has expired and will be abolished, policy sixteen forty-nine, other known as federal families first flown virus act, and some regulations on the agenda to be about, regulation twenty-four twenty-one, vocational technical education. All of the policies and regulations approved by the committee appear on today's board of the agenda for first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. You're at the end of the agenda, section N. Communications, Michelle?
We have advanced critical activity, we will play together in the new board.
Thank you. Safety and security, Mike Rappaport. No question. Delicates, New Jersey School Boards, Karen?
Thank you, Charlie. Sort of a combination of New Jersey School Boards as well as Morris County School Boards, just in that New Jersey School Boards is experimenting with hybrid-type counties. They had one just last week, it was conducted in Danahmer Center Community College, as well as by Zoom. So, next year, we hope that it will be possible to set up hybrid meetings at our county.
Thank you. Morris County School Boards, Mike, maybe you're ready to pull your thunder, drug report. Mike Rappaport, Morris County Services, if we don't meet in July, the drug awareness, Mike Obama.
Over.
Montpel athletic boosters.
Next meeting is in September.
Okay. Leissons, I don't know if it's PTA or maybe near the summer, but Karen, anything material?
Nope.
Nothing from Hilldale, Valley View, Joe?
No.
Mason?
Yep.
Woodmont, middle school?
Storarts.
Or the high school? Okay, negotiations, Chair of the Negotiating Committee for the MTA, that's the Teachers' Association, Dr. Corleone?
Thank you, Charlie. I'm pleased to report that on July first, a tentative agreement was reached between the board and the association. Currently, there is a detailed blackout imposed by mediator as specific to the deal until such time when both parties can mutually agree upon a salary guide, and then schedule a ratification vote with their respective constituents. Once each party ratifies a tentative agreement, including the salary guides, further detailed information can be shared. At this time, I would like to thank both the boards and the association's teams for the professional, respectful, and friendly way this negotiation was conducted. While taking the high road is not always easy, goodwill and trust built is never wasted. Both sides should be proud of Montpel's commitment to respectful and friendly negotiations, and I hope the staff can now enjoy a very restful summer they deserve.
Thank you, Karen. The MTA, that's the administrators, I'm happy to report, as of yesterday, we have reached a tentative memorandum of agreement, it's being finalized, and then when both sides sign off, salary guides will be developed, the association will then approve the contract first, and then the board will approve the contract. Hopefully, it will be done before the opening of school. I also would like to thank both teams, professionalism that was demonstrated by my colleagues on the team, Mike O'Brien and Mike Rappaport and myself, assisted by the superintendent, Dr. Rotar, and the assistant superintendent, Dr. Shorter. One week ago, July seventh, the committee also met with the supervisors association, and we reached a tentative agreement, memorandum of agreement with the supervisors association, and that's a little bit further along because we've had a few a day, they're working on salary guides, and once it's approved, we'll take action, hopefully, again, as Karen said, as soon as possible, so salaries can be implemented and hopefully paid in September or November. I would like to thank the members of that team also that worked with me, Jill Daughtry, Mike O'Brien, Michelle Zuckerman, and the same to administrators, Dr. Rotar and Dr. Shorter. Both teams and the teachers, I mean, the supervisors and the administrators, were assisted by the principals and supervisors association, and they were very helpful and able to get a settlement. The next part of the agenda, section H, it's an opportunity for the public to ask questions about anything that may be on the agenda as an item. If you have questions about anything not on the agenda, it'll be an opportunity at the conclusion of the region, the second public input, to make your comments. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the items that are on the agenda that are going to be voted on, that have one change or one deletion, but I think that was already put in the agenda, and we have one denim that we will speak to when we get it. Are there any questions on the agenda? I will entertain a motion for the consent resolution, please. Go move.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on section I, the minutes? Section J? Section K is what the addendum we had, it's an addendum K thirteen, I believe, Mrs. Slun, is that right?
Sixteen.
K sixteen, excuse me, regarding a resolution for payment to our attorneys. Section L, anybody question? We've got a lot of Ls, a lot of appointments. Anything on M, curriculum instruction? Anything on?
So.
N, N is the big one, excuse me.
Yes, sir. Instruction, I thought you said. As you said, I just want to comment about George Larson, that mental health, I thought that was the right section.
We're right in the middle of the agenda, we'll have an opportunity, okay? Thank you, sir. All right. Mrs. Slun, could you have a roll call to us?
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Cortelino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, I'm staying on section K one, seven, ninety-eight, five, eight, zero.
Miss Vanna?
Yes, staying on case thirteen and M five.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Section Q, any old business of the board? Section R, any general board comments and new business?
Charlie, I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I want to congratulate the board on our relay for life status. The board was a top team in fundraising, so congratulations. Yep, relay for life raised forty thousand dollars this year, and it was all virtual events, so kudos to them. There were two programs, two seminars that I attended towards the end of the school year. These are absolutely terrific programs. The first was on June sixteenth, the second was on June seventeenth. I mean, I must admit, they're favorites of mine. One is the research in microbiology, which is a twenty-five-year collaboration with Waxman's Institute at Rutgers, and the second is June seventeenth, the Ninth Annual Science Research Symposium, in which students engage in a three-year program of original research. I am always, always amazed at the knowledge and poise during the presentation by these high school students. They present themselves as full-fledged professionals, and it's just a pleasure to They present themselves as full-fledged professionals, and it's just a pleasure to watch. I also kind of squeezed in the School of Rock Virtual Concert in the senior courtyard, and of course, graduation was a regular ceremony this year, it's in a beautiful setting. I hope everyone enjoyed that, and just well done to the staff, and in particular, Mr. Sanford, for pulling off a great event.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would also like, since we haven't met since graduation, I would like to thank those of my colleagues who were in attendance at the high school graduation, which was on the Wednesday, a beautiful evening, beautiful ceremony, not too hot, got a little cold at the end, but better than getting too hot, and the night before, the middle school graduation, which was held in the air-conditioned gymnasium, and there were quite a few parents in attendance, and I believe a lot of the grandparents, I should say, were in attendance in the auditorium where the ceremony was streamed in. But again, I'd like to thank all of you, any administrators who were in attendance. And actually, if we have any parents out there who just graduated from either school related graduation, best wishes to them. Okay, the next part of the meeting is the public session, as I mentioned before, it's an opportunity for those people to have a question that they would like to ask. Dr. Roetar did preface some of her comments with what is happening at the state level, but this is an opportunity for you to come up to the podium, identify yourself, and indicate what you would like to report on or can't. Your mic?
There's my mic.
Oh, yes, mine's here.
Thank you. So thanks for having us. Thank you, everybody, for the five emails, for the last couple of long lines, crystals, trying to find a pro, really appreciate the responses. Last place I want to be, is somewhere near, and unfortunately, here I am, and it's too many more, simple as that, I'm a parent that's concerned, but just good news. Per the NJ website that has the COVID dashboard, Mottville is leading the state in 70% of eligible individuals vaccinated right now, on top of those of us that have antibodies, that are recovering, that's all the stuff. So for our children that are young and cannot be vaccinated, or won't be for whatever reason, it doesn't matter as much anymore. These kids are a community that has herd immunity by definition, and moving forward, the intermeetings they have with their friends or families within Mottville, we're leading the way in our town in terms of vaccination numbers. So I ask you, as you go into September, as you do make your plans, think about our community, don't compare us to the state, don't compare us to anybody else except Mottville, and if you trust in science, you trust in the vaccine, and if you know there is immunity and positive these things on top of antibodies, there's absolutely no reason for our kids to continue to be masked at this point, on top of the really low rate that these young children particularly have around transmission and getting severely sick. So I'll be short with the comments tonight, but please, just stop with the kids of this age, there's so many bad things happening, and I wouldn't be standing here after 15 hours of work today to go through this and have this discussion with everybody. I'm not looking for a response back, I understand that this is not being covered this evening, but what is being covered is your plans as you go ahead, and if you plan these certain sessions, to make decisions. So thanks, everybody, for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Pete, right on, the E. Ford River Road. Thank you for your comments earlier, Dr. Roetar. I do understand where you're coming from, but for me, as a parent, this is an urgent issue, I can't wait seven weeks, because the plan for this school will inform where I send my child to school next year, and that decision needs to be planned in advance, not with short notice. So given that, I do have a couple of comments. On the road board plan that was put out, Page 3 states, this guidance document intended to plan health and safety protocols outlined in Executive Board 175 and the road back, the document contains recommendations rather than mandatory standards. Given that statement, which is by permanent health and permanent education, that has put the ability fully on the districts and the Board of Ed for what will happen this year, so this Board here will be the ones who are responsible for the decision for what happens next year and any effects that it may have on our children. I know you know about the survey, I know we've spoken at length as parents about the adverse effects we're seeing in our own children in this district. I know we've spoken at length about the CDC data showing that the death rate for children is essentially zero. I know you guys are very aware also of the increase in mental health issues, suicides, and behavioral issues that not only affect our children at school, but affect their lives at home as well. So it's something that is just very important to me as a parent. So questions I have is that if this district does mandate masks and distancing and partitions and all that for next year, I would expect to see in the plan, proof that these measures are safe and effective for our children, that it doesn't impact their physical or mental health, and that it doesn't impact their ability to learn, which is why I send my child to school. So I would expect to see that in the plan as well, and not sort of just, this is what we're told to do. Given all of that, I just, I do not see any justifications for continuing to mask our children. I think at this point, it's almost unethical that we do this to our children, and I believe these practices need to end now, sooner than later. I know there's other items in the agenda that I would like to address, but for the sake of time, I just want to bring up one more, which is vaccinations. I believe any sort of separation or segregation of vaccinated and unvaccinated students or staff is discriminatory, coercive, and honestly, just seems to be intimidation at this point. I would like the School Board to keep that in mind as any of the plans since the road board addresses that also make the point that schools are not healthcare facilities and should not be treated that way. Healthcare decisions are between medical doctors and their patients and no one else. I would really hope that this district would not participate in any vaccine promotions, but I would view any partition, any participation, I'm sorry, in promoting vaccines for children or staff, discrimination against unvaccinated children or staff, or any conducting of testing or screening, especially when it comes to minors who do not have express parental consent, is not just unethical or immoral, possibly also illegal, but to me, it's just disgusting. I don't think that's a place for us as a school to be. And just to urge you guys, this is a very passionate thing for us, this is affecting our children for the rest of their lives, these past 16 months have been traumatic, and I have seen drastic changes in my children's behavior over the last 16 months. I cannot stand by and be silent, and I will advocate for my children in every way possible, and I believe you guys want to do the same thing as well. So I urge you as a Board who has the power in this situation, to please stand up and put our children's well-being above any personal fears that you may have, and that if that's something that you can't do or won't do, then maybe this is not the place for you. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Dr. Jennifer Bean, I'm probably the only one here to actually say thank you. Can I see how many people here have that?
I said thank you.
Thank you. To them, yes. First of all, I think it's incredibly inappropriate of a professional for the audience to be sneering, for people who have worked at a hospital, who have intubated or taken care of a patient with COVID, or their family members, thank you for your service. I actually am really upset with the lack of understanding of the situation here. I think that the fact that you don't believe that it's safe, and this is most actually directed at the audience, and I would like to turn around. I think it's absolutely insane that we are talking about herd immunity when people are leaving the state, leaving the country, going to other places. If this were just Mottville, I completely agree, I stay in my pod, I take care of my children, I go to work, okay? But the reality is, I don't trust a lot of my neighbors, I don't, and I don't trust people's safety. That's fine, you can say what you like. I think that the mental health issues are certainly caused by the pandemic and the quarantining, and many of these irrational fears that this society has placed upon our society right now, we've just made this up, okay? There is mental health issues here, I absolutely agree. Masks are safe, masks are effective, and guess what, kids do that. If anybody here has seen a child die from COVID, please, please come up to me, because I have, and I think it's really appropriate for people to say that it's not affecting children and it's zero percent. One child who dies from COVID because their parent doesn't want vaccine, or because they're putting them at risk, to me, is too many children. We are in a public school, our job as public school members, no. We provide public school money to attend a public school. Public health is part of being in a public school system. I encourage the Board to continue focusing on academics and mental health, and not dealing with the madness regarding masks and optional. There is nothing unethical or illegal about asking people to wear a mask for the safety of themselves. I think that people calling discrimination because we're requiring a mask is not appropriate use of the word. We discriminate people by, I don't have any evidence, that's fine, I may not be the coolest people, but I'm a good doctor.
What type of doctor?
I have six feet around me, that is appropriate distance, and I'm trying to speak. I am a good doctor, I'm a good mother, and I'm advocating, mask optional is okay in certain situations, but I'm okay with you taking science and waiting, because Dr. Barry is coming, and I'm not being irrational, okay? If my car did not have airbags, that wouldn't, I take airbags, I take brakes, I take a seatbelt. I'm not going to say I'm not going to give masks because I have a vaccine. People are not choosing vaccines, they're not choosing masks, that's fine, okay? You can do that in your public home. Unless people are planning on nearly staying in their houses, which I can guarantee people are not, because of social media, I thank you, and I'm going to urge you to keep focusing on academics and mental health, not on the public safety aspect of this conversation, because I think too much of the last year has been spent talking about masks and vaccines. That's all. If anybody wants to talk about my medical history, that's fine. Could you just speak really close? Can you hear me now? First of all, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Put your name in English.
My name is Gilmina, I don't have a providing my address, but thank you for all the Board members that are here, representative of school, and for all the parents, regardless of what side you are on, thank you for being here and speaking up for your children, this has been very lucky in our world, I'm so happy that it's still around here. How many of you have children in the school district?
This is an opportunity for you to make comments.
I made my comment. It is my understanding that none of you have children in the school district, but most of you do not, okay? Everybody here has. I have four that should have been in the school district, they're not. I have to pull my children from the school district because I refuse to subject them to the insanity that took place this year. I refuse to subject them to the mental issues and health issues that so many of my peers in this room are dealing with because they don't have the choice. Your choices, your decisions have consequences for our community and for our children. The school exists environment, right, to educate our children and to provide a healthy environment for them, and that includes mental health as well, as everything else. I really would urge you to follow the science, follow the science and everything that is available and all the decisions that are able to be made by the Board, because unfortunately, this science is not to be followed. Other school districts have been able to be open full-time since September, full-time, five days a week since September, other school districts have been able to do. As soon as Murphy had announced that if masks, if it's hot, masks are optional, the school districts can make that decision, this Board did not, did not choose, choose to do the right thing for our children, and many of them suffered. I really urge you, all of you, to look at what's going on here. These parents are here because their children are not well, because of the environment that is being created for them in the schools. It has to change. It has to change. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you.
Turn the mic on.
Sorry, I think it's on, you just have to hold it very close. It wasn't on at all, okay? Good evening, and thank you for letting us speak for our children. I am a parent as well as a teacher, and I first want to say that I am upset that we would have to fight for our God-given freedom, and that we would have to ask for parental decisions to be ours. We're not asking other people to make decisions for our children, it should be optional for us, for our own children's health and safety. I'm praying for everyone's children, not just my own, and I'm here asking that it be our decision and just not to be mandated. My little one over there, who's actually sitting quietly right now, has been supposed to September maskless, and they never had to close once because of any outbreaks in the classroom. Granted, not every single child was maskless, although majority of them did not have masks on, the teachers did, but the students did not, and they never had to close once, even with the holidays, traveling, they never had to. When our students were wearing masks this past year, it killed me and made me sick, and I had to send my child into school because I had to work myself. Our children are breathing out and then breathing in the same air that's not meant to be breathed back in. They're breathing out carbon dioxide and waste, and then putting that back into their bodies. How is that safe and healthy for our growing babies? It is not. Masks can be breeding grounds for infections from bacteria, mold, and fungi, which is why you're supposed to wash your hands every time you touch your mask. Are our children doing that? Of course not, they're kids. I can't keep myself from touching my mask often. How do you expect these kids to do it? So if they're not wearing them properly, they're going to get themselves sick. And then, as of July 15th, I just looked this up about, that out of 4.9 million children who are affected with COVID, 0.1 to 1.9 resulted in hospitalization, and children were 0.0% to 0.2% of COVID deaths. The numbers are so low, we should not be forcing masks upon our children. I feel personally it's causing more abuse with masks forcing than it is with a child got COVID. That's it, thank you.
So that was a different topic. Conrad Han, 18, U. L. Lane, Toronto. So Monday, yesterday, the Governor said, I know you brought it up so far, but said no masks mandate regardless of the latest recommendations, so that excuse is gone for now, maybe changed his mind like we all can both. Now, for some statistics, as per the CDC, the mortality risk for COVID among children is actually lower than the flu. The risk for severe disease and full hospitalization is about the same as the flu. So these two facts are also true for the Delta variant and other variants that are coming out currently according to CDC. So we don't know yet about Delta, but basically, it's the flu, okay, it's original Nus, it's the same as the flu. Over the course of the pandemic time, 49,000 people under the age of 18 have died in the US. Only 335 of those were from COVID-19. That's less, during that time period, that that number, 335, was less than half of those who died of pneumonia. More than 2,000 kids and teenagers die each year in car crashes, and more than 1,000 die from drowning. Are we going to tell our kids not to swim? Are we going to tell them that we can't put them in the car? No. Back to the numbers, of those 335 deaths from COVID for people under 18, John Hopkins did a study, Dr. Mark Havy recently did a study, and of those 335 deaths, he said basically zero of those deaths were for kids who didn't have an underlying condition such as leukemia. Okay, so the numbers are really low. All right, switch gears. Now, with all the lockdowns and masking and hand washing and cleaning, many of us still got the bug. I know that, I know many kids, including my son, who had COVID, and honestly, it wasn't completely easy, you know, he was sick and I got really sick, I had an underlying condition, been dealing with sickness for four years, but I got it, I dealt with it, went to the hospital, I'm okay, luckily, thank God. My point here is that now, so what I have now, have immunity. So my point is that we're protected, like the other gentleman said, we're over 70% vaccinated, other people have had it, so you can argue about what the vaccine immunity is better than natural immunity, but the bottom line is, we have some immunity, right, we have a decent amount of immunity here, so. So basically, we're protected, we have immunity, we have immunity. We have immunity from COVID, but it seems like not from tyranny. So no masks needed or wanted. Basically, we don't want it, the survey said so, you mentioned it yourself, right? So our community does not want masks. We want it to be optional. Now masks, it says right on the damn box of the mask that it doesn't protect against COVID. So it seems a joke to me, even though it's not a joke. So why, it seems like people are trying to harm our kids, and I don't understand. Also, here's a big thing. This entire summer, right now, everywhere you go, nobody has masks on. I've been down the shore, it's in New York City, my daughter lives in New York City, we go there all the time, nobody has masks on. Now, after a couple of months, when kids start school and have them sent to school for six, seven hours a day, wearing masks went all summer, nobody did, they're gonna... The mental health issue is gonna be a big problem. Lastly, vaccines. Using the same logic about immunity, I spoke about earlier, me and my son are not getting the vaccine. In fact, it'll harm me, so... Plus, my immune numbers are through, I had the antibody test, it's over 250 nanometers, whatever the unit is. So I know, so I know today's about masks, but the next step is gonna be forced vaccination, which we also don't want. So why would I put an experimental product, which it is, still experimental, if I already have at least some immunity, which is most likely better than what the vaccine will give? This experimental product is showing some signs that may harm young men, more harm than the COVID-19 itself. So why would I subject my kid to it? Why would anybody? Come on, man. Using someone else's phrase. So my son is 16, he likes school, and he wants to be there. His teachers like him, and he's a great student. He needs to be in school without a mask or a vaccine for his sanity, and to grow and learn. This isn't how schooling is supposed to be about. It should not be about control, fear, and politics.
Hi, John, that's you, so I don't want to drive. I want to talk a little bit tonight about a call that I just had a little while ago with the Kinalan Board of Ed members, two of them in particular. And I think you probably all know they made mask mandates optional at the end of last school year. So they did, they made it optional for the end of last year, right? I think you all know that. And we kind of went into, why did you do this? Right? How did you feel about doing this? You know, how did you feel comfortable doing it? I just wanted to try and gain some knowledge and try and get back to you guys here in the room. So essentially, they did an in-depth review of all the facts surrounding masking, right? They dug into the facts, and actually worked with the parents, well, they asked for assistance from the parents, helped provide facts, provide studies. And they did look at the sides. They looked at the people who were pro-masking, you know, they looked at people who, you know, don't want to have masks. And they actually looked at the science behind it, all looked at the risk factors, right? They looked at the number of cases in the town and the state. They looked at the science of the effectiveness of the masks, right? We can debate for hours on that, right? They looked at the negative effects it's having on kids, right? Emotional all these, all those other things. They looked at the severity of COVID on those school-based kids. Some of the folks are talking about, what's the risk they're getting, and what's the risk of them dying of other factors, right? So they took all that into account to make the decision on what they wanted to do. At the end of the day, they basically took the power away from the superintendent as the Board of Education during the vote. You know, I don't know, it was probably mutual agreement, right? Between superintendent, not, you know, feeling it wasn't that person's place to make that decision, or fearing fear of getting in trouble, right, in that space? But they decided to take that power away and vote on whether they could optional it on. And that's ultimately how they ended up passing it. And to say, one of the big things they said is they immediately saw benefits that provided for the kids on their own way, you know, just from a mental perspective. So it's basically moving forward into September, their vote doesn't make it optional in September. We're currently looking into that for the September timeframe. And basically said, unless there is some hard law that prohibits something doing it, they won't take it from another vote again, most likely it's optional again in September. Now, I actually found this kind of interesting. One of the Board of Ed members actually said that if the Department of Health or the Department of Education put, I believe it's guidance, I thought you were asking, you were looking for that a little more, attorney here probably knows. But if they, the recommender made you guidance, she had mentioned something around it being a $1,000 fine and a day in jail to go against those, the guidance from those two organizations, that this particular Board of Ed member would have to spend a day in jail to keep masks on the kids in their school district. I found that very compelling, I think, qualities in the folks that had it. So from that, just wrapping that section up, I just wanted to say that, you know, I hope everyone here takes the time to look at the data. There's a lot of people in here that's willing to actually sit down and discuss both avenues of this, right? Yet some people might die, right? But the overwhelming majority will not, right? And we need to look at those numbers and understand the risks, right? Everything like the risks that are more exciting, right? So my risk tolerance is a lot higher than other people. All right, I think we have a minute and 28 seconds left. 22, John.
Take your time, I defer my time.
I kept my daughter home last year, we didn't want her wearing a mask today. So what I understand, going forward, I have actually three daughters, high schoolers insist on going, you know, I feel comfortable that they can wear the mask and allow them to go. But my younger daughter, you know, it's a little bothered. She stayed home, I didn't want her being in an environment where I didn't ask for that. And what's gonna happen in September? I know you can't answer me, but I want you to think about this. When I basically told the school, I refuse to even put a mask on a child, what's gonna happen? Are you gonna pay for her to go somewhere else? You're gonna kick her out, she's gonna get suspended? What's gonna happen, right? Just please think about that, and this is gonna come in the next meetings. And also, I wanted to ask on a different topic. Did any of you watch the Senate hearing, the New Jersey Senate hearing on masks? If you haven't, it was hosted by Senator Farnooshio. It's online, we're more than welcome to share the links. So if you haven't seen that, you can go watch it. There are doctors on there that talk. There's a lot of good resources that we can help against, if you're willing to be into it. And one night saying, if you want to just read, there was a New Jersey lawsuit that was filed by three New Jersey kids. And listen there to the different concerns that they have with mandate masks on kids. I think that's all that happened today.
Your chance, your chance, your chance is over.
Hi, thank you all for taking the time to hear us. I just want to thank the audience, I'm so happy to see this turnout. Regardless of what the feelings are, and I think you're the only one who knows it, I apologize for getting up and voicing your concerns as well, regardless of how others may feel. Having said that, I think we can all agree that whether...
You can interrupt, Eva, can you give us your name?
Diane. Regardless, I think we can all come to the agreement, regardless of how you feel about masking of the children, that we know that disposable masks are used, they're not single-use only by almost anybody I have ever seen or know, especially children. We also know that the cotton masks that are worn are not effective. That's been shown time and time again with studies. So having said that, the futility of mask-wearing with children, especially with the studies that have been done, the analysis of what is on those masks is absolutely disgusting. You know, feces, urine, virus, I mean, it is just absolutely horrible just because they're kids, right? They're touching, they're reusing, some kids are trading off masks. The list goes on and on. But I think we can all agree that the masks that these children are wearing are not effective. Having said that, I am a huge proponent for mask optional. I respect parents and children that choose to wear the masks. I also feel that we need to respect parents who don't feel that their children shouldn't wear masks. I have two daughters in the high school. My younger one has been subject to depression from wearing it. It's so upsetting to watch it. This is this vibrant child who has shut down. I refuse to have her mask in the fall because her mental health is much more important to me than her education at this moment. And I think you would all agree that your children's mental health matters so much more. So I hope that you will take that into consideration. In addition to that, I believe in medical freedom. I don't believe in medical tyranny. And I don't feel that this school district, or any school district, has any place in sending out emails where they are using words like disappointed and strongly encouraging vaccine scheduling. That is not on the school at all. That is a personal emotion that is injected into those emails. And I hope moving forward, that it's a teachable moment for this board to be a little more sensitive in how these emails are worded. Because it puts this, a lot of pressure when these kids are reading this, of that disappointment. You know, kids don't want to disappoint, especially, you're all leaders here, right? In the educational system. They don't want to disappoint, they don't want to disappoint their parents, they don't want to disappoint their teachers. So when you send out an email that is showing disappointment in the vaccine scheduling, I really feel that it's incredibly inappropriate for anyone on this board to be sending out any kind of email that has any kind of personal emotion or opinion added to that. You want to state facts, state facts. So I just hope moving forward that we all learn from this and that we just take into consideration things that we can do differently moving forward. Thank you very much.
This is Speaker Kamal Ford, I'm sorry. I'd like to share my thoughts. I want to, first of all, thank you for having me, sometimes I'm not ready to launch. I had a couple frustrations this year, besides, uh, Mr. Grau didn't name wrong on virtual meetings. My biggest frustration was the lack of coordination, because it felt like every time something happened, we didn't respond. So every time the CDC says something, changed something, New Jersey changed it, and then we were two, three weeks behind them. And it didn't sit well, because I would call the Montville Department of Health, and they would tell me, oh, this is what we're doing. But the Department of Education and the nurses at the school can completely ignore our guidelines and our suggestions because they're different department attack. Which is kind of crazy to me, but you get it, it's a department decision, you can want. I guess my question for, yeah, I haven't heard a response back tonight in terms of usually on virtual, you say something, and it's basically not broke, or somebody else. A couple questions, I know it's a comment section, but maybe after finishing, I'll roll through these. We're not doing virtual option next year, correct?
That's by the governor's decree.
Right, so how are we gonna do quarantine? If you're not gonna do virtual option? Because I have an issue with, I have an issue with, you know, you just saying, oh, your son was exposed on a crossfield spaced out because some other kid was asymptomatic, and now your son has to quarantine for two weeks, even though I was at the game, and I know he wasn't close to it. But now we're gonna make my son stay home for two weeks. No virtual option, which I'm fine with, because virtual option didn't really work well for us. But, you know, that's something to kind of consider. It would be nice to hear prior to beginning of year.
Dr. Altar said that August meeting will probably have more direction from...
Yeah, here's the issue, right? If you don't have, you don't have the guidance by the August meeting, keep on kicking this down the road.
I don't think our superintendent has kicked anything down the road.
No, but we're waiting for guidance, anyway. So we can't act because we're waiting for guidance. The guidance will change it, first we waited on...
We have to do the guidance we have to work with, unfortunately.
True. Well, we're waiting for the governor's guidance, and the governor came out saying that we could do whatever we want from a district standpoint, and that changed, and now we're waiting for the Department of Health. CDC last week came out and said, you know, the CDC director said that the Delta variant, you have coverage from the vaccine, so you don't have to worry about the Delta variant. That's still debatable, obviously, but the CDC director came out with that just last Thursday. Then, you know, yesterday or days ago, AAP comes out and says everybody should wear a mask, right? That's the trouble and the frustration with parents, is that nobody knows who's in charge. You hear this, you hear that, they contradict each other from all the way up to the president on both sides, all the way down to the... Nobody knows, you know, who's in charge. So from a reopening standpoint also, the reopening plan for next year, I think there's a reopening committee. I don't know when they really got together last. I'd like to listen to ideas about other districts who are going to use our cafeteria. We've chosen for whatever reason still not to use our cafeteria. I was just at a party with two other people, and it was not... Do you wear your mask? No, because I was outside. So it's just frustrating for me to hear all these different things from all these different people, and then you just get no guidance. And we're waiting for guidance, which I understand. Whose guidance are we waiting for? DOH? Oh wait, no. It's CDC, oh wait, no. It's this, it's that. So from my perspective, just trying to figure out what the plan is. There's parents that are talking about and thinking about pulling their kids from districts based on what we're gonna do. It's respectful, it's definitely give them more than we've noticed so they can make plans for their kids. I guess my point is, maybe if you have a plan or a couple of options...
I propose that the last meeting don't leave a plan until...
Sure, but we're waiting for guidance. So I'd like to, like, lay out the plan. If this is the guidance, this is what our plan is. If this is the guidance, this is what our plan is. It may parent, but at least allow parents to leave here the plan prior to maybe August.
Does anybody else want to speak?
I don't believe there's a, I believe there are the Bible, but I don't believe that there's anything that limits the amount of speakers in the Bible, if we could say there are...
I can't hear where the...
Can you cite our rule, which limits the amount of speakers that are permitted or...
There are three more speakers, okay?
No, it's not okay. No, not okay.
Yeah, we've heard quite a few speakers have been...
You have a lot of speakers.
Mr. Altar, the board president runs the meeting. There's nothing he's doing that's inconsistent with the law or the Bible. The Bible has times limits, which he has generously waived. He has control of the meeting, he will decide how many more speakers.
And that's why I said we're gonna go for three more speakers. We have, if you have guidelines, nobody's exceeded it. Nobody's talked over 20 minutes of trying to come up, make your speech, make your statement, your comments, and then we'll vote from there, okay? Do you want to go, you want to go ahead?
If it's short, can more than three people speak?
I'm sorry?
If it's, if it's short, can more than three people speak?
That's crazy.
Why say not three speakers, go?
Go.
It's just ridiculous.
I agree. Andrew Green, I think you guys know who I am. I wanted to start by thanking you all for being here today, even though our time is limited, and the rule has been cited, something like that. In any event, I want to start out by asking the board, is there a list of parents in the community for which any of you refuse to meet with? Or maybe that would be something Mr. Edelstein sees too.
Is there a list of...
Yes, is there a formal list of individuals' parents in the community that the board or any members of board refuse to meet with?
I don't know if anybody refused to meet with anybody, except it's this forum. Because when a board member is an individual by himself, on down to 7-Eleven, in a paper, I'm technically not a board member here, I'm there as a citizen. When we sit as a board, we're board members, okay?
Understood. You know, today I was given some information that there was potentially a meeting that was going to be scheduled, and perhaps maybe Mr. Edelstein could provide some clarity on that. And I was told...
Pass it to me, I'm the chairman, okay?
No, I, I, no, Mr. Altar, you're sitting on the board. Mr. Altar, you were disrespectful to me the last time I spoke. And I really don't appreciate it. I'm a parent in town, I might be an attorney by profession, but I'm not here in that capacity today. I'm here as, I'm here as a concerned parent. And I'd like to know if my name has come across any of the conversations, and have anybody said that they refuse to meet with me? Because that is concerning.
All I can speak for is myself, this is the first time I saw you, met you, I...
No, I don't think so, because last time, during the last Board of Ed meeting prior to my comments, Mr. Grau, you had said it, and it's on the YouTube video. Oh, it's hurricane, so, no, you don't appreciate that.
I haven't met you, I've heard you.
We're, we're first thing. So, so I, I understand, I have other speakers here today. I'm concerned about non-discretion is being exercised. You know, going back to Governor Murphy's plea in June, when we had the instances of extreme heat, as you know, we've been through this before, June heat was not defined by the governor. We gave authority to the local district to decide whether or not to relax the indoor mask mandate during instances of extreme heat. And, you know, as, as it is my right to do, I submitted an upper request, and I have an email from Dr. Rokestar dated June 15, 2021. Dr. Rokestar, I have an extra copy if you'd like to review it, but, you know, just I want to understand how, how the discretion is being exercised, because I was told personally that the reason that the mask mandate was not being lifted during the instances of extreme heat is because there was air conditioning in the buildings. The email from June 15th, and I'll just make the representation too, if you'd like to copy and share with you. Quote, with regard to Cedar Hill, "The units had not been operational since the early fall, since there was no need to have them turned on. When the hot weather arrived, it was learned that there were problems with the units and for of the classrooms." And then the email goes on to state, "The operation of the systems and the cooling and classrooms can be a challenge when the outdoor temperatures are in the 90s." And then it goes on, "On hot days, the fresh air does challenge the system even more." So my concern is, you know, during that specific timeframe in June, why wasn't the masks, why wasn't the mandate lifted just for that brief period of time? I'm concerned about that. In September, we're going to be facing probably very similar circumstances, and my concern is that, you know, with the air conditioning system maybe not being fully functional or being challenged as a result of the extreme heat and, and the dampers being open, you know, to an extent letting fresh air in, you know, my concern is it's pretty warm, and it's warm in here as we sit in here, and, you know, most, most of the people in this room don't have masks on, but our kids are going to be forced to wear a mask unless the guidance changes. So that's my concern, is how, you know, why did the discretion was exercised the way it was, knowing that the system is not fully operational?
I will only tell you that the principals were monitoring. As that email, I do believe, also indicates that the principals were monitoring the temperature in the classroom, so when it rose above 77 degrees, the children will be
Yes, you are correct. It does say that when temperatures reach 77 degrees, the classroom will move to alternative air-conditioned spaces in the school. Why weren't they originally just placed in the air-conditioned space then?
Ms. Green, I'm, this, the public forum, public comment is, is not an opportunity for debate, and I also would like to, you questioned the board's policy, which I now have brought up in front of me, and the board's policy on public comment at, at meetings does state that in order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board shall set aside a portion of the board meeting, the length of the portion to be determined by the board for public
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that the board has contracted you to superintendent in the school, that you will shut down any communication that you disagree with, and that you, you just don't want to hear from me because I challenge, you know, you raised the question, you raised the question, Ms. Green, and I cite the bylaws, cite the policy that has been done. Anybody else?
We put thermometers on our kids' backpacks in William Mason, and they came home, four kids, and one day came home with 82, 84, and 86 in my child's classroom, and I contacted the principal, so there was no air conditioning.
We had two more people enter the screen.
Yes, we did. Nice. We did that in our class, because the kids came home.
I'm using the microphone. Mark Mansour, 13 Hollister Road, Suaco. Before, well, first off, thank you, it's nice to see people's faces instead of just being on Zoom as usual, so, and I also would like to thank you for making masks optional during the summer. The school that I work at right now is not mask optional, so that is at least one positive thing I'd like to bring up, so I'd like to thank you for that. Before I kind of get my comment, I want to read a comment from a high school student who goes to school here, could not be at the meeting, but the parent asked me to read this. "As someone who is hearing impaired, masks are more than a minor inconvenience. To begin with, without masks, both me and my sister have to ask people to repeat things frequently because it's even more difficult to hear. Sometimes I feel like I can't participate in class because I don't want to annoy people by asking them to repeat what they said. We also rely on good breathing in many situations, which obviously can't happen with a mask on. In addition, it can be very hard to breathe at times, especially in gym class when we had to do activities indoors." So I just kind of wanted to bring in a student point of view on the situation. And in terms of what I wanted to say, I'm a little shaky here. The governor, as you know, it's been said a hundred times, the governor gave the power to do what the district thinks is best. The survey that you guys, thank you, Ms. Fano, and thank you, Mr., I'm not sure what you said, for agreeing to help urge the board to do that survey. I know that our group was very appreciative of it. And in that survey, 78% of staff, 77% of parents, and 79% of students out of those who had an opinion, all voted for mask optional. Those are overwhelming numbers, and I'm not trying to disrespect anybody who thinks otherwise. I mean, everybody has the right to believe what they want to believe, to feel how they want to feel, that's what America was founded on, liberty, individual freedom, things of that nature, and we all should have the right to do as we see best for our children. We may not all agree, but that's the beauty of this country, it's choice. I really hope, I know we're not coming to a plan, you know, addressing the plan at this meeting, but I really hope you guys can take the next few weeks to develop an updated plan that reflects the direction the town, the parents, teachers, and the students voted to take, because those are blowout numbers. If we're playing a sport, those numbers are gigantic. I mean, 78, about, almost 80% of every category, even the teachers voted for that. And myself being conservative in the field of teaching, I know that's not the main point of view, I realize I'm more isolated in terms of that, and I'm okay with that, I'm okay with standing up for and taking whatever happens to us. Another thing that I hope we can address in August is to kind of get a little bit of insight into some more guidance on how the district will be implementing. I know not every district's calling the critical race, but, you know, things like equity in education, the LGBTQ curriculum, things of that nature, I hope we'll be able to get some information on how that's going to be implemented in the district, because those are things that are equally important. I know right now our focus is on the masks and having individual liberty, personal freedom, the things that made this country great, to be able to be brought here with the opportunity the governor has given us. And I, also, I wanted to say, my wife, my, we have two kids in district, we're meeting with Holy Spirit Academy over in Monique on Thursday, because what happens here is going to really depend on if they end up coming to school here. We like this town, it's a good district, you know, people who care, we realize that, we have disagreements, but we, you know, you know, everybody does care, so we really hope that this district can be a leader, be a trendsetter, not a follower, be the one who sets the tone for the other districts around here. I was on that call to John with the Kinnon Board members, and, you know, they stepped up, they really did, and now's your chance to step up, so I really hope you guys do. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else want to? I don't think we should stop.
All right, it'll be this young lady and this young lady in the front, okay? You'll be the lady.
Hi, how are you? My name is Dr. Toni Ann Roses, and I have two children. Last year, in September, I decided to not put my children in the Montville Township school system, because I did not want my children to wear masks. I do not want my children in masks, I still don't want them in masks. I don't think that they're healthy for them to be in masks, I don't think that it's good for their, their, their mental health to be in masks. I've seen a horrible change in my children because they have been forced to be in masks at times. Because I was homeschooling our children for nine months, it was awful, I have to say, it was horrible for us. It was, it was sad to see them isolated, it was sad to see them at home, to not be with their friends, and to not be part of the school setting. Around March, my daughter had a terrible breakdown, cried, 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 because she just wanted to be in school with her friends. I was tormented with my own decisions, because I'm a person that upholds my own integrity and my character, and I am protecting of my family and the decisions that I was making for my family in those months that we were home, I thought I was doing a really good thing, protecting them, and I will continue to protect them from wearing a mask. But I had to sacrifice my own beliefs, and I had to sacrifice what I was teaching my children and confused the crap out of them, because now I have to tell them that you're more important, and what you need is to be in school, is to be around other children, to be around teachers, to look them in the eye, but not watch them with their full face. And, and I put my daughter back in school because she really needed to be with other children. That was more important than my own stance, okay? And I understand that, but I will never stop fighting for my beliefs and for what I want to implement into my family, which is freedom, which is medical freedom, to put on your mask if you decide to put on your mask, to be vaccinated or not vaccinated. And right now, there's an enormous division in our world because of this, and we're here today because of this. We've allowed this to intercede into our children's education and their joy and happiness, and it's being stripped away from them because we're here now trying to make a decision about masks, that at this point, we can all agree that you can go outside or anywhere else and not wear it in the confusion, the confusion and the mental torture that is happening with our kids, you have no idea. And I understand that it was spoken, I don't know any of you, but I know that many of you don't have children, it was spoken. So you're not home, you're not washing a mask, looking at how gross it is, you're not listening to your children say that they can't breathe, you're not watching their expression, their frowns go from big to small, okay, you're not watching their, their expression of life diminish, because as soon as they have to put that mask on, it changes everything. When my daughter went back to school in April, she was excited, and after two weeks, she hated it, because she didn't want to wear a mask, and she didn't have gym class anymore. When you're in school and you have to wear a mask and you can't move around, and your, your mental health is affected, you need to be up and out and moving. So she didn't have gym class anymore because she had to take health, so she lost that those three months. So it went, it was worse for her because she wasn't moving around, she didn't have any mask breaks, she was isolated with, with, you know, in the classroom, to not be with other kids, to make the friends that I put her in there to make. So it was a tough choice, I'm glad that she's there, and right now she's taking, she's doing the summer boot camp that you have without a mask, and it's, she told me this morning that she's so happy to be there, she's learning so much, and I'm really glad that you have this program because it's catching, and she's catching up on the stuff that she didn't have while we were trying to teach her. We're not teachers. So I feel like all children deserve a right to be in school, and they have, they should be in school with a choice, because I don't want her to come back to school with a mask in September, and I almost feel like I'm back in the same place, and I'm going to have to find a place that will accept her with a mask. And it's a lot, it's a lot for us, and we don't want to have to deal with that, we want no masks. And I want you to hear us, because this is important for all aspects of our families, people that work, people that don't work, our children at home, there's kids that go to school that are fine with them with wearing a mask, and those are the people that you're focusing on and that we see all the time, because we don't see the stuff that, that's being censored, that we see that's really sad, that these, the science, number one, that's being hidden, okay? And then the fact that, that there's therapists, and I have a patient who works for the CDC, and he's appalled with what's going on, and he absolutely disagrees with children to wear masks and in school. So I am part of a ginormous community that feel like me, and it's, it's so disheartening to know that you're supposed to protect us and our kids and be our voice, and that I don't feel like that is really happening. So I hope that you've heard us tonight, I hope that you've made, you know, that you can feel in your heart the pain that these children are going through, because what I, what I have to do, it doesn't matter, what my family is most important. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank you for meeting in person, so it's nice to meet you. My name is Stephanie Sharrett, and I am Lemon Pondro. And my comment is to the board. So it appears you like to do things by the book, and so sometimes the book is guidance from the CDC, sometimes the book is guidance from the Children's Pediatric, whoever puts something out today. Sometimes the book is wrong, and what I'd like to see this board do is look at the science. There is science behind not wearing a mask, but there is no real science behind masking children and making, thinking that that makes a difference. There's no science really behind masking any of us. I spoke to a, a lung doctor, and he admitted that the pathogens for coronavirus were smaller than the holes or in the, even the N95 now. Why do so many healthcare workers get coronavirus? Wearing a mask, a glove, and all of this, because that stuff doesn't work. It's for control, and I'm not saying that you're trying to control the children, but somebody is. And what I would like to see this board do is to think outside the box. When the book is wrong, throw the book away and be leaders, don't follow the book, use common sense, use, if you find science that goes opposite of what they're saying, throw that away, and just really be leaders. I'm just asking you to be leaders. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone at school. A lot of you have expressed situations to us which occurred in your household with your children, various different agencies that have been reporting, use masks, don't use masks, this last lady spoke about the book, this group says do this, this group says do that, and it is a pretty confusing situation. However, I think that we're in the situation here in Montville that we are moving ahead. I see, it's so nice seeing, or maybe you don't think it is, but it's nice seeing the faces connected to the words or when you used to call in on the Zoom, it's nice putting the face to the individual. But I can guarantee to you that this board, it wants to do the best that we possibly can. On August 20th, hopefully we'll have more information from the governor. I don't know what other schools are doing, I don't know of schools, I'm sure maybe there are some that have not used a mask all year, I don't know, maybe they're private schools, maybe they're proctor schools, I don't know. I don't know of any public school in the vicinity that has ever used a mask, but that's okay, that's, I have a small Morris comedy in my face of operations. Again, I wanted to thank all of you for coming out. Some of you have indicated some ideas, you've made your points known. Dr. Rokestar has reported to you basically where we are at the situation on July 20th. We will be having another meeting on August, August 17th? Well, yeah, August 17th, I might have said August 20th, I didn't do that deliberately so you wouldn't show up on the 17th, it was in a, but our meeting is on the 17th in the same room here, and I would like to again thank you for being courteous, and I would appreciate it, the board, wish you all a happy evening, and I will entertain a motion to return at this point in place. And we have a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you again, and next time you come, when you come early, check out the facilities at the back of the high school, and to see what somebody, I haven't talked to Dr. Rokestar on the floor, if you have a feeling for next year.